I will be happy to walk you through this presentation. So here, when the allegation came to our office, we decided to investigate. We evaluate the allegation itself. And if the allegation is eligible, we take it to the next step, which is plan to the investigation. And after that, we review the records and the documents associated with this investigation, take it then to the interview level and analyze the evidences. And after that, we write the recommendation and findings, the findings and the recommendation. So next slide. Here, I'm going to walk you through the timeline of events. So in April 13, 2022, the Federal Emergency Management Agency flood map released, later concealed in applicant's light. On October 2022, FEMA flood maps adapted by the city after public hearing. In September 27, 2023, incentive application submitted by Elevate LLC. In February 2024, first audience reading with FEMA justification. The second reading happened in April 23, 2024. Second audience reading included retail activations, justification and removal of FEMA justification. As a result, 2 million incentive was approved. Between February and April 2024, the city manager and assistant city manager conducted investigation and confirmed that the FEMA exhibit used in the presentation had been altered as part of scheme. August 2024, the city auditor's office received the allegation and started the investigation. In November 2024, plaintiff filed a legal action. In 2025, city leadership testified under oath that the FEMA portal, the FEMA document, was altered. 2025 also, city leadership testified under oath that they had informed some of the city council member and the mayor. August 2025, the city auditor's office issued a memorandum to the city council recommending an independent external investigation in the best interest of the city. The key finding here was FEMA portal, the FEMA document appears to have been altered. So we reached out a reasonable basis for that. Audience language, presentation, and reason for our shifted between readings. City Auditor's Office found reasonable basis for fraud concerns. Recommendation: We recommend that an independent external law firm be hired to investigate this matter. The external law firm should be retained from outside the city and skilled with type A and type B funding process knowledge. The external law firm appointed to perform the investigation should be selected based upon the short list of candidates selected by the city council. With that, the presentation concluded.
Thank you, Amir. Councilwoman Campus.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so.
Oops. Hang on, will you pressure the light again? There you go.
Okay. So typically, when you find fraud, what is it that you normally do? Do you, what, what do you normally do? Do you normally recommend an external investigation? Or what is, what is your normal process?
I think it depends on the type of fraud that we're talking about. We typically get about a dozen allegations a year, only which, a small fraction of which become actual instances of fraud. Oftentimes, it's situations where we've got someone who's not anonymous, who's actually somebody we can go to and get additional information. In those cases, we can complete those investigations. Sometimes they have complete documentation. They have pictures. They have things that allow us to make a complete and accurate determination. And therefore, we don't need to go to outside counsel in those situations.
So what was the situation in this case?
I, I think this is a level of expertise and just capacity. For, for one thing, we've had an individual that's been frozen in our, in our role. It's an auditor position frozen since the beginning of the year. Where, and also, we don't have the capacity or the ability to, you know, ask for information through what they call the subpoena process. A lot of other cities, like the city of Austin and other cities, have the ability to subpoena documentation. We don't have that capability. So that would be.
Okay, so that would be one of the reasons why you're recommending that it be done by an external investigation firm?
Yes.
Okay, and what about the process of actually reporting it to the, I mean, the law enforcement or a law enforcement agency?
Yes, that's also an obligation we have. When we see fraud, we want to make sure that there's follow-up. So we do follow up with law enforcement.
And was this case recommended?
Yes, it was, yes.
It was, you, you did file a complaint with the law agency, or?
Yes, we, the three of us, actually, Amir, myself, and Samantha Chapa met with investigators, correct.
Well, do you want to let us know who the investigators are? Or do you want to?
Well, at this point, I think.
You prefer not to?
Yeah, if it's an ongoing investigation, I don't want to impair their investigation. So by disclosing who, who they are, it may impair them.
Well, we did discuss this earlier, and I wasn't sure why you were not part of that discussion in our executive discussion. Were you aware that?
We were waiting in the actual waiting room.
You were waiting for us to bring you? Okay. Well, I'm going to wait to see what my other colleagues, members have to say. Councilwoman Vaughn, how are you doing?
It's past my bedtime.
I know. Were you invited to the executive session?
No formal invitation was granted, you know, extended to me, but we were waiting in the event that we may be needed.
You just saw it on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You said in there that y'all did interviews. Who did y'all interview?
Numerous people, especially the alleged person that's making the allegations. We extended several interviews to that individual. Who are some of the other people we did? Again, Amir led this investigation.
So basically, we met with individuals for consultation and also we met with the plaintiff.
So you met with Ajit?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's it? Did you meet with any, any of the people that had been accused?
Accused?
Accused of altering the document?
Yeah.
Yes, we saw their testimony that was made under oath, and we leveraged that for the purposes of our review.
Okay. Here's my concern. I don't understand why y'all can't tell us what law enforcement y'all reported to and ask. It would, I don't know how that would impede their investigation.
We certainly can, but it's not typical that we would, you know, you know, give that information out. But yes, we'd be glad to if you, if you think it's that necessary.
Did we go to the chief of police? Did we go to FBI? Did we go to the Texas Rangers?
It was the FBI.
Okay, and, and did the FBI look at the, at the evidence or what y'all had?
Yes, ma'am. We showed them the videotapes, the testimony. We showed them other documentation and evidence that we had as well.
And?
Yeah, the altered document, the, yes.
And what was there?
It's still under review. They don't, to my knowledge, and I don't know if law enforcement's here, but they don't typically would tell you if they're doing an investigation.
Okay. What was the deciding factor that you thought there was fraud? The, the thing that made you say, okay, we've got to bring this forward? Because I don't want to accuse anybody of anything unless I've got lots of evidence and I see you're wanting to have an investigation. I get that. But I just want to make sure in my mind that you feel like you've got the things that you need because I, I'm looking at this and I'm not sure.
Well, there's reasonable. That's the reasonableness that we're looking at this. And the fact that we seen where the document has changed over time, we could actually, we can be glad to do that at a future council.
Okay. And, and did you base it a lot off of the videos that you saw? Is that what you're basing a lot of?
A lot of it was, where it was sworn testimony, that people said that there was activity that was fraudulent. I mean, there were actually coming forth and saying that altered documents had occurred. I mean, it was pretty, pretty evident.
Okay, and have you talked to the lawyer, Doug Ellison?
Did I talk to him? No.
No, you haven't had a conversation?
Not lately, you know, not lately, that's for sure now. I talked, talked to him way years, a year ago or so because he represented me in a case.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Banera.
So, Miles, this is an ongoing civil suit, right?
Yes, the civil suit of Ajit David versus the city of Corpus Christi versus Mayor Pollock Gohardo and versus Elevate QOF LLC. Elevate QOF just joined within the last month, intervened within, in the case.
Okay, so, and, and you're saying that you, you obtained this information from the depositions?
We obtained some of the information we used for investigation based.
You said you saw, you saw testimony. So did you see the transcripts or did you see?
Both.
You saw the transcripts? And how did you, how did you acquire that information?
A lot of that information was provided by the alleged person.
By the plaintiff?
Yes. But we didn't have any reason to believe it was altered or, or anything of that effect.
So the plaintiff provides you with recorded material and the transcripts from the depositions?
That is correct.
In an ongoing civil suit? Perhaps, I mean, I'm, I know depositions. I've been deposed. So what is it? I know depositions have not been completed. Perhaps, I'm, I'm kind of curious as to why we've got an ongoing civil suit and we're making a decision before the, all, all the facts have been released based on, because you've only looked at depositions from the plaintiff, that the plaintiff provided for you. Have you seen any depositions that have been provided by the other parties?
Again, we're suggesting that outside legal counsel look at this. We have enough, when we did.
So no?
To be reasonable.
So no, you have not seen that?
Have I seen other?
You haven't requested any other depositions from the other parties?
From my knowledge, or, I don't know. Did you?
You have not, okay. So they don't exist at this time. How much money do you, have we, are we appropriating for this investigation?
To my knowledge, there's nothing, other than our time.
No, but, but you're recommending that we use outside counsel. Have we determined a budget?
No, we haven't.
Have you talked to legal? So you haven't talked to legal about that? Okay.
No.
Amir, how long have you been employed with the city?
Seven months.
Seven months? So the investigated, the, the fraud was brought to you, I saw on your notes here, I don't, I don't have a copy of it, was August 24?
Yes, but again, we're understaffed. We are doing a lot of other investigations too. We're doing audit work, as you all know. So we don't get to them right away typically.
So Amir, when, when did you first, when were you first made aware of this?
Sorry, say it again?
When were you first made aware of, of, of this complaint? Where you felt, where you, when did you first get involved with this investigation?
Since I started working.
In January?
In February.
In February?
Yeah.
Okay, so you started working, you started working in this in February?
Yes.
So when did you obtain the depositions?
Recently. I mean, I mean, as George explained, the fraud investigation went through many phases, right? And we evaluated this face by face. So since I started working with the city, I was aware about the investigation and we started this investigation from there.
And you made this, you made, as a certified fraud investigator?
Yes, sir.
Now, do you feel a crime has been committed?
The document was altered.
Okay, so do you feel that there was a crime that was committed?
Again, the document was altered. So we stick with the findings. The findings are clear. The document was altered and the decision was taken based on this.
So if you don't feel, if you feel, if you don't feel there was a crime committed, then why would you go to the FBI?
For consultation.
For consultation?
Yes, of course.
Okay. And how did they respond?
You may need to ask them, sir.
Okay. But you're proposing that we have an investigator come in to, to pursue that? Why, why wouldn't we refer this to the chief of police? I mean, Miles, it, wouldn't, wouldn't the chief of police be the authority for this organization? For the city?
If you're looking at, if you're looking at criminal activity, it would be law enforcement. It'd be either the chief of police or the FBI, depending on whether it's federal or, or state that, that you're looking at. If you're looking at civil type fraud, that would be a private type attorney that would pursue civil type fraud. However, civil type fraud that was being, upon which the city was being defrauded, that, that's going to, there, there's no problem with us pursuing that. I mean, that's, that would be normal. And that's part of the lawsuit as well. I mean, if, we're free to depose all the participants in the lawsuit about any civil fraud.
I mean, there's about, I mean, I think we've got three attorneys involved in the city, plus the plaintiff has an attorney, plus the other party has, I believe, two attorneys. So why would we refer it out when there's an active civil investigation of which more depositions have to be completed? There's more testimony that has to be completed, additional evidence that has to be completed. And we've only heard from one party, one party that basically is in an active lawsuit against the city, and we've only obtained information with this. I, I have a problem with the impartiality there. I question.
Yeah, if I may respond?
Yes, I've been, I have that expectation.
Yes, it is a federal document that we're talking about, a FEMA document. So we think naturally the FBI would be involved in that situation potentially. The other note, it's not just one plaintiff. The city has sworn testimony that says in leadership that there was altering of a document. So it's, it's pervasive. It's not just coming from one individual. So that's the reason why.
So do you feel that a crime has been committed?
I don't, I can't make that determination. We, that's why we're making the external.
And I'm, I'm just kind of curious why, why we wouldn't go to the chief of police?
We have in other situations that have warranted that for like a departmental situation, not a third party.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would just think particularly that the civil suits going on, why wouldn't we go to the chief of police here? Who has resources, who hasn't, who, who has an internal affairs department and who has at times referred, referred it out to other parties because he's the authority on law enforcement here in the city? At least with, with, within our organization, the eighth largest city in the state of Texas.
Yes, and like I said, we have in other situations.
Why wouldn't we do it in this one?
I mentioned the federal, this is a federal situation, I think. We can certainly reach out to the local CCPD. Again, we were just reaching out yesterday on another allegation. So we, we do have that contact.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Scott.
Hey, George, I appreciate the, appreciate the report out of the committee. I would like to have seen the report, that's okay. I don't want to impede your initiative. It does seem to me that the proper disposition of this is to both the chief of police and the FBI. And then they, they run their course on their investigations. But only if there is, is the civil fraud. And are you, is this a civil fraud issue? Or is it a criminal fraud issue? I, I don't, I barely know the difference. So I didn't know if that would be a question for you or for Miles. I mean, I'll ask you.
Okay. I can't make that determination. I'll defer that to the city attorney.
Okay. Miles, it, based on, have you seen this report?
I've, I've only seen the one-page summary report that's been released to the public.
Okay. So, so do you believe this is a civil fraud, potential civil fraud issue? Or is it a potential criminal fraud issue? Or is it both? Or is it neither? Or do you have enough information to answer that?
The, the determination of whether an item is fraud depends on, first and foremost, on the intent, oh, it depends on the intent of the person proffering the document. And it also depends on the materiality. So fraud has to be intentional and material. And it also depends on the entity that receives the document knowing, consider it like, consider it like materiality, considering it to be material, but also not having knowledge otherwise. So if you.
You know what I'm really thinking? It's 10-08 and I don't understand what you just said. I'm so sorry. I apologize.
I'm saying merely an altered document on, in and of itself does not, does not prove fraud. But it is some evidence that there might be a fraud that, that could be occurring. It's just simply doesn't prove it in and of itself.
And I recognize your determination is this is worthy of additional review or investigation.
Yes, sir.
My sense is the proper channel was, was, is the chief of police and the FBI. And that if you have submitted this to the FBI, then check that box. And I think you should submit it to the chief of police to investigate.
We'd be more than happy to do so. Thank you.
And then what I don't, again, I'm, I'm trying to learn if it, if there are civil concerns that the city attorney ought to weigh in. But, but also, I guess I also understand the potential impartiality issue. And so I'd like you to maybe weigh in on that. I mean, they're, they're thinking we should go get a hard, another lawyer from another town.
If there's fraud that vicious a transaction from which the city needs to be, from which the city wants to, it feels a need that the transit, that it was material to the issue, and the city believes that the transaction is defective because of the fraud that was conducted in the transaction, we're perfectly capable of handling those allegations. Law enforcement determinations of fraud should be handled exclusively by law enforcement agencies. And in fact, we would not want to be interfering with those law enforcement investigations should they be occurring.
Right. Okay, so I think what I'm suggesting is that, that this ought to be referred to the FBI and the chief of police and that the, the audit committee ought to solicit an update in 30 days. Although, I'm laughing because we're having a hard time meeting, right? I guess, yeah, you guys are working hard on that and that, that's, that's not your fault. I, I did one other thought. I didn't, you said it's part of a scheme. Is that, was that language that came out of one of your interviews? Or was that come from city staff?
That came from city staff in one of the interviews with leadership.
Fascinating. Okay, thank you, sir. Amir, someone's already asked you that. You said you don't have a copy of the full report, city attorney? I think it would be prudent that you have a copy of that. Is that a, is that a confidentiality issue? The full investigative report that led you to believe, or to, to recommend hiring an outside attorney?
I'm sorry, I don't.
I guess I haven't seen your full report. And maybe there's, that's intentional. Maybe we're not supposed to.
I think the memo was my report.
Oh, really?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, there was no background in addition to that? Okay, that's fine. You said you have talked to the FBI. All right, so councilmember, my, my take is that, I don't want to get in the way, but it sounds like the answer, you're doing what the answer is, which is it needs to be turned over to the FBI. I would add the chief of police because he has an internal investigation unit. I would also ask that you share it with the city attorney. And again, I've, I've listened to you three times now. I'm not completely sure where that's going. But I do also think there needs to be some sort of, some sort of follow-up. And maybe it's straight to the council. I'm not trying to circumvent the city council. But I was just thinking, that's, that's what the audit committee is, is a part of the city council that's designed, you know, to manage the audit structure. So that's my thought. That's my thought.
Sure, thank you. And may I ask what follow-up you were thinking of?
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
I know, it's my second time telling you. Look, this is good. I, I don't know. I, I think, I think we would like a sense, I think counsel, I think I would like a sense that, that we're staying on top of it. Is the FBI gaining, at some point, the FBI has got to tell us, right? Don't you think? Yes, we're moving forward on a cause of action or we've closed the case. I think we'd all like to know that. If, if that's the avenue we take and then if it goes through the chief of police through the, through his investigative unit, I think we would all like a sense of, you know, it's, it's going from where it's going. Or if it's not going any further because they choose to close the case because they don't think fraud's committed, I think we'd like to check that box too. And then finally, I think we would look to the city attorney to kind of help us understand the civil fraud concept through all of this. That, that's what I meant.
Thank you for the clarification. Much appreciated.
Councilman Hernandez.
I, I think, you know, I'm not sure if this is a criminal aspect, you know, to where, and I'm assuming you, you know, when you, when you had a communication to the FBI, that, you know, they don't tell you anything. But the, you know, I'm not sure if it's criminal in the sense of that aspect. However, I do know that the, this is highly politically charged, right? With very politically connected individuals involved in this aspect. And so the idea for a third party outside the city limits gives a, you know, that doesn't have any connections with anybody in Corpus Christi would probably give us a unbiased position. I think about the FBI. This is considered a hardship location and they're, you know, they're required to stay here three years and then they can pick, pick where they want to go from here. So I know we have a constant rotation of FBI agents here locally of where they only stay here three years. It's unfortunate that's a case, but that's, that's how they, that's how they see this area here in South Texas. I would, based on your recommendation of trying to have somebody from outside the city who has no connection to anybody here locally would probably be the best option. And I would make that recommendation. Thanks.
Councilwoman Campus.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And I would agree with Councilwoman Hernandez. It may not rise to the criminal, as a criminal case. And, you know, I'm not sure if it's, I mean, I know it's a civil case now, and it's an ongoing civil case. But it's definitely a case that tarnishes our precedents, you know, here, how we do business in council. So I would also strongly recommend that we do use an external investigation because, you know, just the perception of it just being independent. It just would be worthy, you know, especially with, you know, concerning the mayor, the city manager, some previous city council, some present city council members. So I think just, you know, for everybody's sake, I would agree with that. So.
Councilwoman Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, this, this whole thing has become very public. And I, and I use the word unfortunate because right now, my interest really is finding ways to unite, move forward, become cohesive. There's so much unrest right now. That's my interest in using those words. With that being said, it's hard to be someone who sits on the audit committee and receive a memo like we did from your department and do nothing, you know? So the, the next automatic thought is, what, what do we need to do? So we bring this forward for this discussion to try to determine. Because your memo basically said, based on information that's crossed your department, there's reason to believe there's, could be perhaps a failure of controls or something that falls outside of the normal, the normal flow chart of how we, how we would do something. What's the crux of it? The crux, you know, we're talking about an incentive, you know? We wanted to, to work with the local business to help invest in something. So all we're really evaluating is going back and saying, did we follow all the right steps there? In my opinion. My concern is that it is an inactive lawsuit. And, and what I don't ever want to do, and what I don't believe in doing, is presiding from these, from this dais on things that have not reached a conclusion. When you're talking about, what do we do with, you know, my, my partner sitting here next to us? To me, this needs to go through the appropriate channels. And you see me in audit committee, and I, and I'm a big, big proponent of following the correct protocols, making sure we follow the right steps. And so I hear what my colleagues are saying about an external, an external set of eyes. My question is, where does that fit right now? Because this is actively, you know, plaintiff versus city. And now we're calling for this other portion to be added in. I understand and I sympathize. And I said it earlier today. I don't, I don't want to put anyone that wears the name badge Corpus Christi in a position where they're basically in a bad position. Whether that's by optics or by asking them to preside over something that could put them in a, in a feeling of a bad spot. I don't like that. I want us all to be a team. That's what we should be. And so that, for me, is why they're, they're warranted having this discussion. I'm not sure what the next step is, honestly. There's been some recommendations here. I don't know what the next appropriate step is right now. Maybe legal can give us some kind of direction. But at the end of the day, I want us to follow the best protocol and make sure that individuals or organizations who have the authority to preside do. That's what I'm interested in, protecting the city and protecting us as a team. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman, can you?
Thank you, Mayor. This is what bothers me about this, about you guys doing the investigation. And I hear from my colleagues and other people is that at one time, you hired Doug Allison to represent you for the city. And that's fine. I have no problem with that. But what also bothers me is that he is also the plaintiff's attorney, right? So my colleagues see a conflict of interest type of deal. And, and I understand where they're coming from. Me personally, I don't think there's anything criminal that happened. I think it's unethical. I think that there are some people involved that's held to a higher standard. I think if the police or the FBI is investigating this, I think we would have known something by now. I feel that we need to move forward to get an outsider to investigate this because they have no ties to you, no ties to Doug Allison, no ties to the hotelers, no ties to the mayor. Somebody out of Corpus Christi to look at all the information. Understand Councilwoman Paxton's concerns because there's, there's an ongoing civil lawsuit, but it's only civil right now. And I think we could get information from both sides of, of the lawsuit and give it to their attorney we decide, and we do decide to, to give it to. But I think we need to investigate it outside because I think some unethical stuff has happened. And I think we need to address that, if it was, if it is true. You know, so there's always three sides of the story, you know? So there's ours and the truth. And I think we need to, we need to look into it. And I encourage my colleagues to, to feel the same and, and find somebody to, to look into this. My opinion. It's really sad that we have to go through this as a community. It's all over Facebook. It's all over everywhere. But those depositions are public. Civil lawsuits are more or less public unless there's a seal on it for whatever reason from the judge. But, you know, it's out there, you know? It's no secret to Corpus Christi. Everybody knows about it. So that's where I stand with it. I think we needed to give it to an outsider who has no interest with Corpus Christi. Somebody in Dallas, you know, somebody, somebody Dallas, Houston, somewhere has no connection with Corpus Christi. Because Corpus Christi is very small. Everybody knows everybody. And this is very political. And I just think that we need, we need to do that. Thank you.
Councilman Banera.
You know, well, the reason it's political is because the plaintiff has made it that way. I mean, during the time when he disclosed that the item was altered, what is it? He made it very political. He threatened council members. He raised his voice to me. What is it? And now, he's, he went to the press several times. He recorded a conversation with Peter without his knowledge and then gave it to the press. You know, what is it? And now, the plaintiff is the one that's came to you and made the complaint. And the plaintiff has been the one that's provided the majority of the evidence that you have. So, you know, I, I think, you know, from, from one side, you know, it could be perceived that, you know, this is part of a witch hunt because the plaintiff has tried to litigate it in the press, hence providing the depositions to the press. And now, and now they provide the, the information to you. And I don't know, I think, my deposition was three hours long. Peter's five or six hours? Six hours? Six hours? What is it? Heather's? I don't know. I'm assuming it was longer than three hours. Did you review each one of the deposition, did you view all the depositions?
Yes, yes.
You, you looked at every minute of every deposition? Okay.
Yes. And if I can add, if I may, the easy thing would have been just to sit on this and not...
Oh, no, no, no. The easy thing would have been to report it to law enforcement. But you don't feel, you haven't gotten enough information. But wait, wait. You haven't got enough information to determine that there's a crime, correct? You, you told me you don't know that there's a crime.
We don't know for certainty. We're not law enforcement.
Okay. So, so, but you've, you've referred it to law enforcement. And, and I would ask also, you know, my, my concern is that, number one, I would have a difficult time myself because of the fact that I've been deposed. And I'm, I've heard that I may be deposed again, that I couldn't make a decision. I don't think it would be, I think it would be a conflict for me to try to determine an attorney. You know, what is it, to try to determine an attorney as well as the mayor's in the lawsuit. Everett is, is also, what is it? It was also deposed. And then, you know, I mean, that's the thing. So it makes it difficult for the council to be able to determine what, what outside investigative authority we have. When we already have a system, we have an ethics commission, which I would think that they, they have integrity. And I hold our police department at the highest of integrity within the nation. So I don't know why we would go, or why we would question the integrity of the ethics commission, or the police chief, or the police, the renowned police department that we have.
I'm sorry. I must have missed something. No one's questioning the integrity of any other organization?
So, that's my thing. I think that this idea that there is, that we should use something outside that is non-conflicting, that when we have, we have, what is it? People with integrity here within our organization. And I would recommend that you provide that. I wouldn't want you to sit on it. Had someone come to me, and I had maybe the inkling that there was a crime, then I would contact the police chief. And I would hope that you turn all that information over so they can make that determination. Because, like you said, they have access that you don't.
Yes. And again, we work with them. We've worked with them in the past. We have an investigation that was recent, with just yesterday, we reached out to them. So we do.
Will you, will you provide this information to him?
Oh, no, this was on another investigation.
Will you do it now?
Oh, absolutely. I think I committed to that earlier.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to confirm that. But you're, you just have the suspicion that may, you don't know that either, there's been a violation of ethics. All you know that is the document has been altered. Correct? You've determined that a document was altered. I'm sorry. I'm just wanting to repeat that. My apologies for interrupting.
No. We, we determined that a doctor, that a document has been altered. We also determined, based on testimony that was given under oath, that there was altered documentation.
But that's on the deposition. You didn't, you didn't have anybody take the oath, did you? Take an oath, did you?
No, we're not able to do that. We're not law enforcement. Yeah.
Okay. So, all right. That's all I just wanted to determine. You don't know that there's a crime. You don't know that there's been an ethics violation. And we have, we have the ability to be able to use that with, internally, within our, within our city. Because we have an ethics commission, and we have law enforcement, of which the chief of police is the authority for the city of Corpus Christi. So, and you've already committed to being able to turn this information over to the police chief. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'll share the information that we have with the police chief.
Thank you very much.
Councilman, can you?
Thank you, Mayor. Roland, I don't want to fight with you. I promise. It's too late for that.
No, no, it's too late to fight.
Yeah, it's too late to fight. But you screamed loud every day to trust staff. Trust them. Trust them. They don't trust staff. Or staffs and all those depositions saying it happened. And it makes, it makes no sense. And you're named in it, Councilman Banera. I mean, I mean, of course, you're gonna, you're gonna say what you're saying. And I get it.
I'm named in it? I'm a part of the lawsuit?
You're part, they said that you knew about the fraud, that you knew about the altered documents.
I don't know of any fraud, sir. I can't determine that. I'm not qualified to determine it.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not qualified to determine fraud, law enforcement.
So, I have the floor. So, I just, it just blows my mind. But, you know, any elected official that gets accused or something, it's always going to be a witch hunt. It's political motivated, blah, 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 blah. It is what it is, you know? And I just, I think it's a screwed up deal. I think, I think, I think all of it's just messed up. But like I said, I don't know if I can make a motion to, to have an outside attorney's office look into the allegations of this. But I don't know what I need to do, what I need to say. But that's my motion. I wanted, I wanted to get this to an outside attorney.
Second.
Thanks.
Councilman Roy.
You know, first of all, I know that all of us up here were elected officials. And part of the job is that we have to maintain our ethics. And, you know, yes, I was deposed because I was on council at the time when this took place. And so I've had the plaintiff's attorneys ask me a series of questions, just like I know that I'll be deposed again. And I'm, defense asked me a series of their questions also. And it's my job to be able to hopefully tell them what I know and tell the truth. So that's just part of the job. I'm not looking at this as far as saying, you know, that I am, I guess my, my thing is I'm impartial. I mean, I'm listening to this. I don't think, here's my, my only problem with you, and I'll be just honest, is that, yeah, Doug Allison was your attorney. You had a relationship with him. He, and he basically, and you took information from one side. You took information from the plaintiff, and that's the only thing you did. Because that plaintiff had the ability to ask only the questions they thought would be in their favor. And now, soon, as Miles said, you're going to have the ability, they're going to have the defense ask their questions. So there is two or three sides, like Eric said. But I'm not worried about any of that. And you have to go through the process. At the end of the day, we have to go through this process and get to the bottom of it because the people deserve to know if there was something that was inappropriately done, that they're, we're going to get to the bottom of it and find out. And if it was, was it purposeful? I don't know. You know, sometimes, even if it's not purposeful, you're still bound by the law. And you have to suffer the consequences if you did something that was wrong. So I'm not worried about that. I am going to recuse myself, though, if we have to make a vote on this, because I'm in the middle of it. I, I mean, I have to, and, and so I'm not going to decide either way. Because either way, I don't want to get involved in this investigation. I welcome whether you go to the Texas Rangers, or whether you go to the chief of police, or whether you go to, who was the other one? The FBI?
Yes, sir.
Or whether you go to, you know, in, in my business, in the mortgage industry, when we have fraud, it actually falls under the postal inspector. I don't know if you knew that or not. Because fraud usually is perpetrated through email, it's perpetrated through the mail, or it's perpetrated through other, through fax machines, when they had fax machines. And so the postal inspector and the Secret Service are the ones that investigate bank fraud. And so let the process go through the process. And, and I welcome that. But at the end of the day, the people deserve to understand what happened and know what happened. And hopefully, at the end of the day, if it wasn't intentional, we could use this as a, as a learning experience. But I do caution you in terms of the fact that you were involved in this. And I actually think if you're going to do the ethical thing, you should recuse yourself also because you shouldn't have been a part of this in the first place. Because you had a relationship with that attorney. And you should have turned it over to your staff and stayed out of it. And that's just my opinion.
Right. And that, and we've done that with Amir Hussein, who's leading the investigation.
But Amir also works for you. So maybe at the end of the day, and again, whatever this council wants to do, if they use an outside agency, a non-biased outside agency, that's fine, too. Whatever you guys want to do, it doesn't matter to me. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman. I, Mr. Holland, or either of you, how do you come and say you've done an investigation when you've only spoken and seen one side of it?
Amir, you led, led this investigation, but we felt that there was overwhelming evidence based on just testimony that was provided.
So you agree, based on one side, because the defense has not deposed?
Yes. But if you listen, well, I'm sure everyone here's listened to the testimony. And it was pretty, pretty overwhelming in terms of what was being conveyed. And then we did more than that. We actually looked at the documentation. We tested it. We performed our own test to see how that would work.
Mr. Holland, you're admitting to us that you only have looked at one side. But you were coming here and saying, we're the judge and jury on this case.
No, ma'am.
Sir, a case is not cut in half.
That's why we're, we're suggesting outside counsel look at this.
Okay. But you didn't go to law enforcement, which is weird. Anytime someone, anyone in this room, you think there's a crime that's been, you think there's a crime that's been committed, somebody has broken into your home. What, you go to law enforcement. You've not done that yet.
Yes, we have.
Which is interesting.
We went to the FBI.
However, you did go to the FBI with a one-sided case. And you, sir, are conflicted. Doug Allison was your, or is your lawyer.
He's not my attorney.
He was, though. Was he? Maybe I'm wrong.
Yes, in the past, yes.
In the past, he was your lawyer. Okay. And, and you didn't speak to people. You read depositions. Or maybe you did both, right? Is that right?
We did speak to people.
And, and looked at, no, no, it's okay. There are yes or no questions. I'm just kind of flabbergasted. You know, these, the ordinance was vetted by staff, was vetted by legal, was vetted by city managers, was, was vetted by the legal department. And then it was on this dais. So if everyone is saying this was, this was a forged illegal document, there's a lot of people who crossed the line. lot of people who crossed the line. Because the nine people here depend on the process that happens. Did y'all talk to anybody on that? About the vetting of this ordinance?
We saw testimony.
No, no. But, no, no. Did you talk to anyone about how the item was vetted before it came to the dais? Because it was, and that was already told to us.
So, I just want to make a statement to fact here, right. When allegation comes to us, we have two options: to take the allegation and investigate it and evaluate it and raise our voice and our concern, or disregard this allegation. So, we evaluated this investigation. We ran the investigation independently, and we came to this conclusion.
Right. Based on everything y'all just admitted to, which is, it was one-sided. So, it's just wrong. I'm sorry. And he's conflicted. But that said, Miles, I'd like to ask you, what is your opinion on doing and starting this whole nother investigation while there is litigation, which essentially is an investig... Actually, there's four investigations, because there are four attorneys involved.
Yeah. I actually think there's... It's a little odd to do an investigation in the middle of a lawsuit. But keep in mind, every attorney who handles a case does an investigation, does a determination of what the case looks like, does a determination of all the evidence that's been provided. If city council really wants to deal with this and is uncomfortable with the local representation, it's no problem to hire a litigation attorney who handles municipal cases from Austin. We know those persons. But that would be not just an investigator, be an attorney who'd handle the city side in the case and report to the city council. So, the city council will be able to talk to that attorney about the case.
But I would say you would need to hire them. Because people are conflicted on this dais, whether they realize it or not. They are conflicted.
The charter provides that we select the attorney. But I know quite a few excellent trial attorneys who do municipal cases. In Austin, Texas, they aren't connected to the city in any way. It's a costly thing. We do our own litigation for a reason, generally, when we can. So, I'm willing to bring that attorney to the council. It will be a council decision, because the budget for that kind of matter, you're taking a case, you've got discovery, probably half a dozen depositions, interrogatories, potential amendments of pleadings, and then the jury trial. I think this case is gonna go to trial. So, it's gonna be substantial, but we get the budget from them. I can...
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I think we need to look into that. Because there are fundraisers, there are people that sponsored fundraisers, there are meetings that have taken place, lots of conflict up on this dais. Councilwoman Vaughn.
George, you guys are in a very difficult position. I think you're trying to do your job, and you're doing what an auditor does. You saw something that you thought was wrong. Now, I don't know that I've got all the evidence. I'm not gonna accuse anybody up here of anything, because I don't think you should ever do that. But I would say this, everybody here is conflicted, even Miles, the lawyer sitting over there. And I think Miles is fair. But I think everybody's conflicted. And Everett, I appreciate the fact that you said you'd recuse yourself. That's what you do if you're accused of something or you're in part of the lawsuit. That's what you do. So, that was stand up. But everybody's conflicted. And I want to take up for the plaintiff just a minute here. You know, it says, "He felt like he was done a wrong." He did. And that's the reason he filed the suit. He felt like something wrong was done. And I think he was called a liar. I get it, because that's how I felt over this D-SAL. That's kind of how we were treated. You know, because sometimes when you don't get your way, you just get mad, and you start accusing and spreading all kind of crap. And that's what we've gone through. And so, we've got to be careful how this goes. I get why you wouldn't want to share it with the attorney, the city attorney. I understand that. I wouldn't have done that either. I would have been concerned. I'm glad that you took it to the FBI. I think that was a start. I'd like to hear what they said if they thought it should go any further. Because I don't know if a crime was committed. It could just have been unethical. But I think anybody that looks at the document can tell it was altered. I mean, and what's bad about this is the community has seen all of this. They've seen the testimony. So, if you see the testimony, then you think something has happened. I mean, anybody with a bright mind would think something was happening if you heard it. Because staff said, "said it." And it shouldn't have gone to the agenda. I don't think it should have gone to the agenda. I think they should have vetted it some more. Anyway, I think what y'all based your stuff on was the interviews that you saw. And I think that's what the public's seen. And I think that we have to do due diligence, because the public has seen all of it. And we don't want them to think... They're gonna just continue to say, "Well, something happened." You're gonna have some on each side. So, we've got to figure out how we do this. Do we let the police chief handle it? Do we get an outside investigator? I don't know. But I always look to the fact that you first take it to law enforcement. I just think that should be done. And you said you would do that, and I appreciate that.
And just to be clear, FBI is law enforcement, but we will take it to CCPD as well. Thank you.
And I also trust Chief Markle, you know? So, I think maybe that might be a start. If y'all want to turn it over to investigator, I mean, I'll look at it. But I don't know that anything has... I don't know if anything has been done. I don't think any of us know that yet. Because we haven't heard both sides. We've only heard one. And in a court of law, you always have both sides. So, this is really hard, but it's gonna be political. And I don't want it to be to get out there like this. I mean, we just go from one thing to another. We've got to get this together. But I don't think you should be maligned. I mean, I think you are doing what you think is right. Would I like more information? Yes. Because you haven't sold me yet on why you brought it. I'm being honest. So... But our job is to do due diligence. And I would love for it to have gone to the audit board first, is what I would like to have seen it done, and then brought to the council. But thank you.
Okay. Lastly, I'm gonna say, again, that this ordinance was brought before the legal department and staff, and it was approved to move forward. So, I just want that on record. And it is their duty to ensure that all documents that go before any city council are vetted and, in fact, legal. So, that said, there is a motion and a second. What is it for?
Motion to refer the city attorney... Motion to refer the city attorney to hire an attorney from outside Corpus Christi to investigate the fraud allegations regarding the type B funding of the Home Wood Suites.
Okay. You said outside agency before. So, you changed your motion? Your motion was seconded by Ms. Campos, and it was to refer it to an outside agency. So, now you've changed your motion?
With an attorney.
Okay. Can you repeat it? I missed it, because I thought she made another motion.
Eric, Mayor, can I talk?
Yes, go ahead.
Before you do that, do you think maybe we should consider, before we go and spend a bunch of money, take it to the chief first and let him look at it? Would y'all be open to that and let the chief look at it first?
How about... How much money does it cost, Miles? Can you get an estimate, or something like that?
It probably won't cost a lot less to investigate than to have an attorney actually represent us. An attorney, a good competent counsel representing us, and being able to evaluate all the claims is probably what you want. Like I said, this is... He's gonna be having to observe this case through all the evidence creation, observe all the... There's this...
Right, Miles. Do you have a problem?
I would estimate somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000.
Oh, my God.
$200,000, $300,000.
Jesus Christ.
They would stay in the entire case.
It's for trial.
Oh, well.
They send Miles's...
Okay. So, do you want to take Carolyn's advice, send it to PD?
And then look at it.
I just feel that I trust the chief. I trust our police department. But you're putting them in a very hard situation, because the fact that they work with us here. Like, we know them. Like, some of these allegations are people in this dais. I mean, it just... It doesn't make sense.
Hey, I'm gonna go anywhere y'all want to go. I'm just saying, that is a lot of money. We don't have that kind of money to do that yet. And I just want to know for sure, does he think it needs to go forward? I just think they need to look at all the evidence that they've got and listen to the tapes. I don't know if the chief has listened to those. I'm willing to go the way y'all want to go, because I think we have to do due diligence. But I just want you to think about it. That's a lot of money to spend for that. On a... It's kind of like D-SAL on a maybe.
I mean, how much money are we gonna spend with CCPD? With their time?
Well, nothing. You wouldn't have to pay CCPD to do it, would you?
I mean, the payroll that they're working on this case and everything else.
Well, they get paid every day.
Yeah. But just saying, you know, it costs how much? Hundreds of thousands of dollars to run a city council meeting? I mean...
Yeah. I think I want to point out, CCPD is not just sitting alone as their own little insular agency. CCPD collaborates with the FBI. CCPD collaborates in their... When they are doing a criminal analysis of a potential criminal case, they are collaborating with the district attorney to determine what is the type of case that could be...
I just hope, Miles, for the record, I just hope that you're not just throwing $200,000, $300,000 out of your butt, because of the fact that... I know for a fact you don't like Doug Allison. So, you're trying to do anything and everything. And I get it, whatever the case is. I just want to make sure that we send it out to somebody who could look into it. I mean, this is not just some small allegations. I mean, this is a pretty big deal. But, you know, I just... If my motion fails, it fails. I mean, as long as the public's here, as long as you know that I tried, that sort of matters.
For the record, I don't not like Doug Allison.
Okay. Well, that's my opinion.
He is the... Doug Allison is...
That's my opinion.
...respected representative of an opponent in a case. And he's a good attorney.
That's my opinion.
And I respect him.
That's my opinion. But that's the only thing I want to do. I just want to show the public that we're trying, and that's it. So, if it fails, it fails.
Hey, I still have it. Hey, I just want you to think about it. Because we don't know if it's criminal. We don't know if it's just... I'm sorry. Accidentally cut you off. We don't... I just want us to make sure, because I don't want it to look like a witch hunt. Whenever we do it, I want us to be sure what we're doing. And so, I don't have a problem with the chief looking at it and then coming back and have George meet with him. I don't have a problem with that. And then go forward after that, if we're not satisfied with what he says. But I'm gonna go with you guys, wherever you want to go, because I think we have to do due diligence. But sometimes, due diligence is starting at the bottom and working your way up.
Just one last thing. I just feel like, you know, we waste so much money on other things.
Put on your line.
My first. I just feel like we waste so much money on other things, just like the sister city. I mean, I just feel like we need to do this for the public, and that's it. You know? Nothing comes back. Nothing comes back. But I think they should follow the case outright in making sure that no one's done anything wrong. That's it. That's my opinion.
Okay. Councilman Scott.
So, I said I didn't want to get in the way of your continuing investigation. I think the right answer is to go to the police chief. Doesn't mean we can't hire somebody afterwards. But I think that would be the next step. I would like to ask him to kind of give us... Again, I don't know how this works. I don't know. I want to know how it works, right? But I think he can provide some context with the other investigative agencies. That doesn't mean... That doesn't mean we can't hire somebody, A, we need to know really what number we're talking about, right? Which, if we don't not do this, if we first have a conversation with... You sit down with the police chief, and the police chief, through his internal investigation, do their work. I don't know how long that takes. I would hope not long at all. Then come back, and by that time, you'll be able to say you found... I assume you'll be able to find, there's five people, and this is what it cost. And then we make that decision. I don't... If I vote no, it's not because I don't want to do it. It's that I think we should go to the police chief first, and then subsequent to that, if we feel the need, then go and on.
I think we should do this. Okay. Thank you, Councilman Scott. We have a motion and a second to... Oh, right. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Public comment. Yeah. Come on down. Open public comment. Okay. Oh, I think she's on.
Okay. Let me tell you what my problem is with all of your discussion. You know, there should be somebody that investigates it. But I think everything is already tinted. It really is. Because you've got an auditor, as the paper that I passed out to you, that had an internal investigation done on him, okay? Found to need a growth plan or to be let go of this company. You guys decided not to do it. But that is the truth. And his lawyer was the lawyer that's defending the people that are against them. So, let's look at what you've got. If you put an independent auditor, and that auditor tells you, "I'm gonna go to this auditor to get the information," then that's not right. And that he's got an employee telling you that he did the investigation, that's not right either. What needs to happen is you need to have somebody that's totally independent, that doesn't know the auditor, that the auditor is not allowed to be there with him or give him information, and that it starts from scratch. If you're gonna spend that kind of money, then start from scratch. Do it from that without having it being compromised by anybody. You have to have transparency. No. Okay? That is important to us, to we, the citizens. And I agree that you've only heard one side of the case. You haven't heard the second side. Unfortunately, I agree with some people that I don't care about, but I agree. Okay? It's very simple. The truth is the truth. And you have to stick to the truth. And the truth is, you need to be transparent to the people. You need to be transparent. You need to be able to hear both sides. And putting the chief of police involved in this, it's gonna be kind of hard. He's a very honorable and distinguished man. But he answers to him. Okay? So, an independent thing would be better if, if you can keep it truly independent and transparent. That is the question that you're gonna have to ask yourself. That is the question that we, the people, are gonna be asking you. We want transparency. We want the truth. We don't want any end-ends. And we don't want a person that's already been found to have problems to be the person conveying that information. Thank you.
Rachel Caballero, D1, City Charter, Section 11A1, willful violation of any code of ethics or conflicts of interest provision under state or federal law or city ordinance, misconduct, malfeasance, incompetence, inability, or willful neglect in performance of official duties.
You let know, let's say, in this March, I guess, from sometime probably after March 7 and before the second reading. Fair enough?
That's fair enough. And I don't know, from memory, I'm gonna tell you who I did, who I believe I told. I may have told others, but I'm not for sure. But I know I told the mayor. I know I told Councilman Roy, Councilman Pusley, and maybe Councilman Suckley. But for sure, Pusley and the mayor in one phone call. It was right after I met with the architect.
Both of them, you had informed them that there had been this altering or tampering or forging of a federal document, but they were still willing to support it, right?
Correct.
And that's true for the mayor and true for... I don't want to throw them together, so I'm gonna ask individual questions. So, what you're telling me, then, is that the mayor had definitely been made aware that the altered federal document used at the time of the first reading to support the request for $2 million, that even though it had been a federally altered document, she was still... Had indicated she's still okay with moving forward and approving it.
Correct.
The Audit Committee is not a convicting organization. We should not be going to Chief Markle, as the CCPOA has endorsed many of you behind that dais. And it would... And it would be a conflict of interest. Because of even the minute speculation, and I know how to work Adobe Acrobat myself, and I know that it does take seven to 10 strokes to modify documents. So I stick by my petition to remove the mayor, and I'm going to continue with petitions to remove anybody that knowingly has lied and is deceiving the community. Any elected official that tries to change the city charter to remove the ability of the community to make this petition to remove elected officials that are involved in any type of fraud, I will promise you, I will make sure you never run for office or get elected again. Thank you.
Statement of fact. The city manager is a constitutionally sworn officer that swears an oath to defend the laws. If he believed the item was any of those, he had a duty to inform the entire city council to not just select a few public officials, or myself, but all of us. And to this date, no one, no expert has said in, in this litigation that the document was a fraud, or, or, you know, whatever term they're using. No one has. And so, I'm sorry, I, I, that is a statement of fact. I was never told the document was not legal. And I'm not an attorney, and I rely on the city's attorney, or our attorney, our, our legal process, when we all do. There's five of us that voted for that item, because it landed on an agenda. Illegal, and there was proof of that. Legal department looks at that, it should have never gotten to this, to this dais. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning, or good evening. I am Bridget Baldwin, Corpus Christi, Texas. I was also coming in tonight, because I am a citizen. I'm sorry, I'm a GLO, I sit on the mitigation committee. As a citizen, on a citizen committee, excuse me, I'm trying to get it together. And I am that person that don't know anything about this document. I haven't seen it. I'm fast on Facebook, so I don't know, I don't know, I'm just hearing what you all are talking about right now. And I'm trying to make it make sense. You know, if you're innocent or something, I'm not accusing, like I said, I don't even know what we're talking about, about this thing. I'm just here, listening to the issues. But why would it be not a good idea to send it outside? We don't have anything to worry about. And then putting the chief of police in a position that he works for all of you to make that determination. And as a citizen listening from the outside, who would believe anything he's saying? What would happen? I want to know what would happen if he said, "There's nothing here"? Would we not send it on to the FBI or someone else, or no? I'm just asking, because I don't know. So, if he said, "I don't see anything", what, what are we going to do then? And then, as a citizen, listening, and then coming back and hearing that there's an investigation, but after it got to the chief, nothing's going to happen, I would be more suspicious as to what did or did not happen. And I don't know. For five years, I've been sitting on something, waiting for an investigation, because I trust my elected officials. And I believe blindly that everybody here is a person of integrity and walks straightforward before us, and here to serve us and, and have our best interests at heart. That's what I believe. So, all this coming at me and, and listening to what's going on, I don't know. And I, I feel sorry for you, sir, that sitting here and the way things are thrown at you. I think you don't have anything else to do but your job. You know, and what else can you say? And I don't know what happened before then, I'm just, like I said, coming in as an unbiased person, listening to that. And it sounds kind of crazy to me, that you wouldn't take something on the outside and not sit there and investigate it. I don't think that that is something anybody would want to do and be put in that position. And what a horrible position to be put in. And for Representative Paxton, I think the, the position you held that you want everybody to work as a team and together, that, I don't think that's going to happen from this point. I think that y'all have a lot of work to do, need to retreat or something. But anyway, so I am, I am wondering how an investigation is placed in somebody's office or given to someone, and then what takes place after that, is what I want to know.
Yeah. Thank you, ma'am.
That's what I want to know.
Okay.
Because I have something that's been under investigation, and now that all this has been said, I see why it hasn't gone here or there or anywhere. But it will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Robin Cox, District 3. First, I want to say that I sit here and I'm really sad, because we voted for y'all and we trusted y'all. If I committed fraud, I would go to jail. And there has been people that go to jail. Ask Wesley Snipes, fraud is illegal. And when I look at you and see some of your judgments, and I can't, I know we're not supposed to say you by name, so I'm just going to kind of point. He said at one meeting that, and to my face, that one of his mentors, his idols, was John Longoria. Well, I think John Longoria went to jail, went, got caught doing fraud, so I wouldn't use somebody as one of my people that I looked up to as someone who went, got in trouble for fraud and was in house arrest. The second thing, as you say, why not go to Chief Markle? I know Chief Markle, he's a respected man, but what a horrible position to put him in, when he's got to work with the mayor, the city manager. It's almost like, who's minding the keys? Who's minding the shop right now? And I don't know if Mayor O'Hardo was guilty or not, it sounds like it is. My dad used to say, "If it walks like a duck, talks like a duck, it's probably a duck." And then I heard some of you say, "Well, we don't know what happened." You sound like the man who walks in and catches his wife in bed with another man and says, "I don't know if he slept with her, he was in the bed." We all know what's going on right here, and if we don't do and call a third party in, I know you say it's going to cost $200,000 or $300,000. Some of you have that much money invested in shoes in your closet. Your five purses would add up to that. This is worth it. The city of Corpus Christi is worth knowing the truth. By the way, if anything happens to any of us, we didn't commit suicide. I know people who are literally afraid, they're afraid to come up here. They've told me, "What are you doing, Robin? She's very powerful." Roland, you say you've been yelled at? I've been yelled at on the campaign trail. Some of us are afraid to say anything. We shouldn't be afraid. This is my city too. This is every one of ours. If you live in Los Encinas, if you live in Hillcrest, if you live in Ocean Drive, it's all our cities, and we deserve to know the truth. I also wanted to say, we, I, I lived in Lafayette, Louisiana in 1991, when David Duke and Edwin Edwards were running against each other. And I remember asking one of them, "You've got a Klan member and someone who stole from you running?" They said, "We're used to getting stolen from. Let's not look like the city that we're used to crimes being gone against." I also wanted to say, I remember back when I was a little girl, and I think it was JP Looby was the mayor, and we respected our mayor. Whether they were Democrat or Republican, we respected them. We knew they weren't going to lie to us. I wrote a letter at that same time to, I think the, the governor was Briscoe. And I was so proud, I had it framed. How many people are going to be proud if we have a stain on us for fraud? We deserve to be, to know the truth. Thank you, Mr. Roy, for saying you would recuse yourself. That was an honorable thing.
Yeah, statement of fact. Again, no one has said that any document was fraud. No, no one, no one, no one. So I don't think you should either. Secondly, it was determined by our own departments, by our own staffers, that that document was not fraudulent. And it came forward. And it came forward, but not just amongst five people, nine people. Nine people, ma'am, you had your time. Yeah, no, you had your time. I'm giving a statement of fact. So it was determined, it was vetted, and it was put on an agenda. I'm going to repeat that. It was determined by staffers, by an assistant city manager, who may, please, ma'am, stop. An assistant city manager who may have said something different in her deposition, but she was part of the vetting. And the city's legal department. And then it landed on an agenda. So, let's get our facts straight. That's why this is a problem. You have people coming up under a city auditor's title, saying, "We've done an investigation. Oh, but we only got half of it." It doesn't work that way. Yes, sir?
Julian Hernandez, Corpus Christi. I guess, I guess it got as entertaining as it did last week, to say the least. But as, yeah, I mean, that's, some of the stuff that you're displaying here is rude and, and whatnot, you know? But last I heard, and like I said, this, I've only started coming to these meetings. Last I heard, an auditor was fired for auditing something. I give these guys praise, because to do the right thing, sometimes it's very hard. And, and all I heard from a lot of these, a lot of the council was hardship on these guys for doing the job. If, if somebody got, if a little girl got molested, would you go to the house and start asking the dad? Would you go to the brother that might have been in the same room? Or would you go to the police? Just in my personal perspective, you know? I, I look at this in the eyes of me as a parent, me as a taxpayer, me as, as just Joe Blow, just sitting down there. I came in today, obviously, this is my second time here, but I thought I noticed that the assistant city manager was, if, if that was her, came in here and, and just, just resigned, but came in here posing something. And is that correct? And, and that's because she just looked familiar to me, if that was her. So as, as a citizen here in Corpus, what is my perception? What is my perception of that? Like she had an agenda, she knows something like insider trading? Okay? That's, that's the perception of your, your, your folks out here that are, that are not able to come here. The other thing is, is if, to get an outside bias, that's not involved, that's not recommended by, by, by anybody here, or not even knowing something, that would, yes, put the city, the city taxpayer at, at ease. You know, and the strong opposition that some people are pushing makes the red flags go up. And that's what I think, you know, if, if you really want true transparency, this is for the people, and what does it cost? Yeah, $200,000, but like somebody mentioned, we spent more on less. We spent more on less, so what is this? And then you, maybe you can have the city behind you, instead of causing the division. Because right now, what I see is, as the young lady mentioned before, that it's just so in that division here in the city, or the taxpayers. But think of that, that one girl that, we're not going to go ask the, the in-house, the people that were there. We're going to go somewhere else. And it was a federal document, and it should go to, to the federal people. If, if I pass them, if I speed, I guarantee you, that guy is going to pull me over, whether I read it incorrectly or not. So that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Sandra Meyer, District 2. I am hungry, because I have not eaten, so I'm going to try to make this fast. I'm very sorry that this is going on. I have investigated many, many allegations of fraud. And the good news is if they've reported it to the FBI, instead of spending money to start hiring an attorney, ask the FBI, hey, give me an update. Because they'll tell you, or they should be able to tell you pretty quick, if this time, if they've got a criminal case or not. Real simple. And, I mean, and talk to the police department. And I highly recommend that they make relationships to where every time they have an allegation of fraud, they feel comfortable talking to the police department, to the attorney. Because I had excellent recommendations when I was, or, like I said, I haven't eaten enough, so. Like I said, things work when people communicate. And they need to be able to be communicating with police and the attorney office on every allegation of wrongdoing, that it does look like there's fraud. And criminal requires intent. And this group out here, they don't fully understand that the intent to do wrong is a little bit harder, because the attorneys, their favorite question is, "How did they know they could not do that?" And that's a hard thing to overcome sometimes, so I do, seriously. Hopefully, y'all can just talk to the FBI, get an update, and then consider whether the city's going to spend money or not. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to close public comment. So why aren't we doing what she just suggested? I'm just curious, instead of spending $200,000 to $300,000? I mean, you can't get better than the FBI. Councilman Scott.
Well, I think, oh, that was out, I'm sorry. I'm not convinced it's $200,000 to $300,000. My sense is, you were saying it's $200,000 to $300,000 that we have a lawyer that, that is on our side through the trial, as opposed to a lawyer that's going to do their investigation. I think there's some issues around that, by the way. I would, I would ask the council, who would hire that lawyer? I don't, I also don't understand why we, we spend the next week trying to get word back from the FBI and the police chief, and we put this on, I mean, three people can put it back on the agenda. I don't, I, I don't think this is, I don't think this has to happen tonight. I think it's a step-by-step process, and, and, and the next step would be get, see what the FBI says, see what the police chief says, put it back on the agenda for some sort of review, and then have, at the same time, have the police, Miles, you tell us, you know, there's five people, and here's what they cost. But I think that's what I heard you say, it's really expensive if they hold our hand through the trial. But if you're getting, if you're looking for a report, it might be less.
Well, keep in mind, the, the information is still in the process of being developed. The deadline for completion of discovery is December of this year. And there's a trial in January.
Good point.
So, any person that's reviewing this case is going to want to see all the depositions that come in in order to have a complete investigation. That's going to be an attorney who's going to, to review all the evidence in this case. Well, you might as well have an attorney representing the city itself through, through the trial. I mean, that, that really would provide a value to the city. So that's why I say it would be $200,000 to $300,000, and that's what it would cost. And actually, that's, you just hired an attorney about a month ago that, to handle a case. For the rest of the case, it was about $200,000 was the.
Not me personally, don't look at me like that.
No, no, I mean, but, I mean, the city did. And so that, that's not exaggerated at all, at all. And this would be more complex than the one that was hired.
I just think this is a step-by-step process, and I know today, if it passes, it's fine. I, I get clarity in a third eye. I just think that it would be nice to know what the FBI is saying. It would be nice to know what the police chief thinks. It'd be nice to know what the police chief says, this is a two-week investigation, or a four-week investigation, or, you know, talk to the FBI. So, my sense is there's a step-by-step process.
And I would like to also point out that if, if anybody thinks that we, we as the legal department are conflicted in this case, then we have a duty to go out and hire that outside attorney as well. So, that, in and of itself, if, if, if there's a thought that we're conflicted, we're going to go out and get, get an outside attorney, because we need to. So that's.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I guess my point is, I'm not saying no to an outside investigator. I just think it's important to hear what our chief thinks, and hear if the FBI can give us a response. And I don't know, right? So maybe, before next Tuesday, they go, "Yeah, we're not talking, because it's an active investigation." And maybe the police chief says, "Hey, this is, you know, you need to, this needs to go outside of us, but we don't have that," and I just think it's a step-by-step process.
Councilman Campos.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so I did hear there was a motion, and I, I seconded it. And I, I'd also heard Councilman Roy recuse himself. I'm just wondering if some of the other.
Oh, I am, I'm abstaining.
Okay, and Councilman Barera will be abstaining as well? I'm just wondering. He's not?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I, oh, I guess there's still somebody else. That's what I was wondering, if, if y'all were going to be recusing yourselves. So you've answered the question. Thank you.
I will say, for the record, I think a few others should be recusing theirselves. Not y'all, y'all weren't even here.
I was like, Torin, this has been the craziest nine months. I, yeah, so much for 10 o'clock. I know there's a motion and a second. I am a huge believer in independent, you know, outside, because I. I am a huge believer in independent, you know, outside because I said it earlier. I don't like the appearance or there being any kind of connections that could cause, you know, from the social research terminology, bias. I think this is a very serious thing that I, too, sympathize. And I want all of the processes to be followed correctly because I don't want to be in a position where there's uncertainty. And so the, like Councilmember Scott was saying, like Mr. Rizley was saying, if there is even a concern for there to be a bias, then we should. We should go outside. What I think, and I will support what prevails here, but I think what we should do is, there is a case currently active where the plaintiff has a lawsuit against the city. They are still under discovery. They're still getting all the facts. They have not made a determination. There is already an active group of lawyers and judges and everyone that has the credibility to preside over the legal system, actively looking at the pieces of this. I think personally, we should allow that to play through. Once there's a determination made, revisit. I don't know what the ramifications are of having a third group come in while we're in the middle of this case. So for me, what a plausible timeline would be is allow this case to proceed. The auditor, who has already said that this can be sent to our other law enforcement agencies, besides that, they saw the word FEMA and they went to the FBI because they said chain of command. That makes sense. So working through the audit committee, working through the FBI, what they say to us, you know, we don't know that there is criminal, we don't know what's happening here, there could be an ethics, maybe we go to the ethics committee out of this. I think we let these two things go to completion and then make a decision. I don't know that we can bring in a third party in conjunction with the steps that are taking place right now. But there's a motion and a second. So those are my two cents on it. I think that's a plausible direction.
Okay. So initially, Mr. Contham made a motion to refer the Homewood Suites fraud allegation to an outside agency. So, and you seconded that, right? So now you've reworded it to say to outside counsel? Is that what you're... Okay. And you're good with that, Ms. Campus? Instead of outside agency, he's outside counsel?
I'd like to amend that, and then I want to wait. I mean, I'm going to abstain. But I think that if any of us have received contributions from either party, then we should all abstain.
Well, and I, my question would be if Councilman Hernandez and Council... Hang on, hang on. If Councilman Hernandez...
This one is considered fraud. This one is fraud. This one is fraud. You're alleging fraud. You're alleging fraud.
Stop, stop.
You're alleging fraud. You're alleging fraud. Say it again. Go ahead, say it again. I didn't hear you.
Okay. Let's, y'all stop. Guys, stop. So you're...
Say it again.
Okay. Where you're... What are you doing? Stop.
Say it again.
Hey, enough, enough. Can they make a motion?
Well, that's what I said, that if anybody here, because they're alleging fraud, then we should wait until we see... If anybody's receiving any contribution from either party, then we shouldn't participate.
Well, that's a conflict. Miles, you can jump in anytime. What is a conflict, then? I mean, no, not, oh, my God. Because... Pardon that?
Yeah, there is a dollar limit for contributions of mandatory abstention. However, there is, if somebody feels that they are conflicted, then there is a lesser standard that you probably, and I always, my recommendation is, if you believe there's a possibility that you are conflicted, you should abstain. It's a, I mean, that's a, that is a broader, so viewpoint.
All right. The motion's on the table. The motion, Councilman, the motion's on the table.
I didn't get any money from the hotel, or just FYI, thank you. I didn't get no money from them. Look at my campaign financial report.
We have a motion and a table, I mean, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second on the table to go outside counsel. All right. To go with outside counsel. Councilman Scott.
I've received contributions from both sides of this equation.
Right.
I'm not going to amend it. I'm not going to amend it.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think I got, as I think through all the parties involved, and so I think that if nothing else, it makes me not conflicted out because I can, I'm going to do it. I think, but I want to be clear, you can look it up, it's there.
Okay. It's 11:23. Please submit your vote. Okay. The motion fails. So is there another, is there another motion to Councilman? Oh, motion? Councilwoman, hold on. Paxton? I'm sorry. Okay, he was first. Yeah. Sorry. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say to the audience here, first of all, thanks for hanging in here for this long day. But the other thing I just want to say from my perspective, I want everybody to understand why I abstained. Because the fact that I was on counsel and I was in this process and I was under a deposition, I feel that...
So are we just trying to figure, is it, did it pass? Or did it fail?
It failed, but she'd like to...
Can I, I'll wait till everybody's done, and then...
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I make a motion to reconsider my vote. Hey, hang on a second. Let's, let's, let's let Councilman Moore finish.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. The only reason why, again, what I was trying to say is that either if I would vote yea or nay, you know, I don't want an advantage. I don't want an unfair advantage. I want the process to go through and make sure that we have the ability to cooperate fully. And so that's the reason why I'm abstaining.
Okay. I'm sorry. I think I made an error. The abstentions don't count towards the vote. Yeah, they don't. They don't. It's my fault. I'm sorry. I'm just tired. No. Yeah, they don't count. That was, that's a mistake. I'm sorry.
So anyway.
Excuse me. Did it pass, then, Rebecca, or what?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Moore is still trying to...
That's all right. I think the ones that were listening understood what I was saying. Thank you.
Councilman Paxton, did you have something?
Okay. All righty. So there being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned at 11:26.
I don't know.